Have us gather together. The last month of September, along with the church throughout the world and Christian communities throughout the world, we've been celebrating a season of creation. So our prayer this evening will be a prayer for our earth. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Oh, powerful God, you are present in the whole universe and in the smallest of your creatures. You embrace with your tenderness all that exists. Pour out upon us the power of your love that we may protect life and beauty. Fill us with peace that we may live as brothers and sisters, harming no one. Oh, God of the poor, help us to rescue the abandoned and forgotten so precious in your eyes. Bring healing to our lives and to the lives of our world. Give us strength and courage to endure this time of pandemic and swiftly bring a vaccine that will end it. Touch the hearts of those who look only for gain at the expense of the poor and teach us to discover the worth of each thing that we be filled with awe and contemplation to recognize your presence in every creature. We ask this through Christ our Lord. Amen. Good, well, this evening, we're very happy once again to welcome back our, some of our parishioners who work in the medical profession. They were with us three months ago and I. If you have questions as they're speaking, please put them in there and hopefully at the end we'll have some time to address them. Also, a reminder that on the upper right-hand corner, you have something marked speaker view. And if you click on speaker view, then only the screen of the speaker comes up. When you click it off, the rest of us all come back on. So I want to welcome doctors Patty Harrow, Bob Mooney, Bob Buckley, and Tim Ganey. We're so happy and grateful. And we also want you to know that as our fellow parishioners, we both admire the work that you do and are grateful to God that you use your gifts. We know your time is precious and so giving us the time tonight is deeply appreciated. So I'll ask you each, if you'd, you know, share with us whatever you'd like about, you know, your work, the effect of the pandemic and coronavirus on your work. And then some of the questions that you're facing and dealing with and some questions that we might have for you as well. Patty, Dr. Patty Harrow, why don't you begin? And if you just remind us where you work at.
So I belong to Sutter East Bay Medical Group. I'm an internal medicine physician and I'm a hospitalist at Sutter Delta Medical Center in Antioch. Hospitalist is the equivalent of your primary care physician. We're the inpatient equivalent of that. So we admit and manage patients 18 years old and older in the, in the hospital.
Great, thank you. So since you were with us three months ago, you, you were early on dealing with COVID patients when this all began. So how has things unfolded for you in the last few months?
Yes, so when it started, the, the numbers have started to go up. And I think the highest census for our hospital was in June, July, August. And then this, this month, September, the number of COVID patients in the intensive care unit and in the non-intensive care unit have gone down. So thankfully, we've seen improvement in the number significantly. And we've actually, from my experience, I've taken care of families, actually mother and sons related. And, you know, like whole families that would be admitted in the hospital and in different severity of illnesses of illness. So you can see the impact out in the community in families getting sick. And you're able to trace how they were, they got sick and how the disease spread out in the community. So that actually, that's the nature of my practice, being in the hospital. So we see the, the severity, the improvement. We're able to track it firsthand, not through the news.
At the, in our county, Contra Costa County, I use, the numbers are going down.
Yes.
We've just moved from purple to red, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. So what that entails, and I'm sure a lot of you have already reviewed what the tiers indicate. And for our county that shows some allowed openings and to a certain percentage maximum, depending on what the capacity is for that facility.
And that's a good sign for us.
Yes, that's a good sign, but I think I just want to remind everyone and I want you to spread the word that even with this improvement, we still have to keep with the good job that we're doing in terms of the hand washing and keeping the mask on and just trying to minimize the, the direct interaction. Because those are the key things to be able to maintain this good, this good level and even try to decrease the spread further.
The issue that a lot of people are struggling with is the opening of schools.
Yes, and that is a big concern because children have shown, it's been shown, studies have shown that children can get the infection and even spread it, or they can be symptomatic and still spread it. So it's crucial that, that we are able to control. Cause the hard part to control really with this kind of infection is human behavior. Behavior is hard to modify. And with children, that's even harder because children are social creatures by nature. And so if we can maintain the distancing and the hand hygiene and wearing of the mask with children, then I think it'll be easier to manage. And the other thing too, of course, due to, I mean, not all parents or caregivers are able to scale back their work or able to not work. And they don't have childcare and sometimes children do go to school sick or sometimes they're undetected, like they, they're starting to get sick. So that's another thing that's gonna be hard to control. So it's a big challenge. And I mean, as a parent, I'm also very hesitant in sending my children. But of course, you know, it's, everything is just changing every day, every day.
Yeah, I think that's one of the struggles that people have is because it varies. Also varies from different parts of the country. And I talked to my family in Ohio and there was a high school I went to opened in late August and September with 700 students with masking and distancing and so on. So, you know, we hear different reports from different places and that can add to some confusion for people.
Yes, actually, I have a, my older brother, he lives in Hong Kong and he has two daughters. And they actually just started, they went back to school two weeks ago and they went back to in-person learning. And in Hong Kong, naturally, when the infection started, they started their at-home learning end of January. So they were like, they, they already did the in-home learning and the quarantining early. But I guess in their area, they were comfortable in sending their children, of course, with a mask. And, and actually, my brother showed me a picture of his daughter's classroom and all the desks were spread apart and the kids were wearing their masks and they were all spread apart. So I mean, they're fortunate that, that the school is able to do that. Here, I don't know if all, if our schools, all our schools will be able to do that. So, you know, here, I'm still, you know, I, I still can't fully imagine how we're, we're gonna be able to safely send our children back to school. Cause it's not just the children, we're also thinking about the staff.
For the Diocese of Oakland, they said it must, it can only happen with the consent of the pastor, the principal, and the faculty. And I think it's a challenge for faculty. Some of them have older parents that they're taking care of and seeing regularly. So they don't want to take the risk of infecting their parents. And others have small children at home. And again, it's a concern for them. It's a really kind of a complex system that has to be put into place in order for it to be effective.
That's right. And what the studies have shown is that the biggest risk factors are the ones with other medical conditions and advanced age. So age is a big factor in the severity of the illness. So, so I don't blame people if they're being overly cautious because they're caregivers and all that. Because that's what the studies have shown. People with other medical, with medical conditions and of advanced age get pretty sick and it can be fatal.
Bob Mooney, maybe you could talk a little bit about updating us from the last few months. If you unmute yourself. Bob, you have to unmute yourself.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, there's something wrong with my microphone. So, yeah, during the past three or four months, I've transitioned to doing only telemedicine in my urgent care practice for my own safety. I'm 63 years old and I have a heart condition now. And so there's a few reasons why it's not wise for me to get exposed to coronavirus. So I've still been pretty busy doing telemedicine. Early on, I'd say in March and April, I was seeing quite a few patients who had COVID. And they were pretty easy to diagnose. They were pretty sick and, you know, we refer them to the clinic and get tested to confirm what they had. The CDC was putting out advice about how long to keep them in self-quarantine. And that was changing over the months. They finally settled on 10 days from the onset of their symptoms. So that's what I was using to tell them to stay home. And then if they had family members, they had to be quarantined for 14 days to see if they came down with the illness. So close family members of confirmed COVID patients had to stay out of work. So there was a very big domino effect that was going on, we were trying to manage. The other part of the business that we began to get into was group testing. This involved several different situations. Some elderly care facilities like Maraga Royale, Concord Royale. They had maybe 60 or 70 staff, up to 200 residents, and they all wanted to be tested for COVID on a regular basis. And so we were sending our truck out to test them. And it was a pretty challenging thing to set up testing for something like 200 plus patients at a time and get the test back. At the same time, the type of tests that we were using was changing. Early on, we had access to a rapid test. So within 15 minutes, we could tell the patient whether they had a positive COVID test. That was all sort of gobbled up by the government and they basically weren't allowing clinics like ours to have access to those anymore. So we were going to the send-out test, which at first took about three to four days to get back. Then it was longer and longer and longer. And it got to the point where it took up to two weeks to know if you had a positive COVID test, which was ridiculous for many patients. And as the big lab gained their footing, they were able to get faster and now they're back down to about three or four days. The other interesting business we were in was with college students and athletes. So for example, at Cal, the regular student body wasn't allowed to return to the dorms, but fraternities and sororities were allowed to return to their houses. And so they wanted to be tested. And so we were doing testing and as, you know, in batches for sororities and fraternities all up and down the road. And kids would turn up positive from time to time. And they actually had a pretty good way to quarantine them, but they had already figured out. They had a quarantine room in their basement and they would only have the kids live a single, you know, occupants in the rooms. Eventually, those kids transitioned to the Tang Center. So the Cal Berkeley was able to absorb all that testing for them and they're doing it now. The other business was for the college athletes. So they were allowed on campus to train and they actually had congregant living where the athletes only lived with each other. Now is the case at St. Mary's, USF, UC Berkeley. And so we were testing athletes. And we were kind of trying to work with the conference in terms of what they were going to allow as an accurate test. There's basically two kinds of COVID tests. One is you swab the nose and look for genetic material from the virus. It's called the polymerase chain reaction test. And that's a little tricky because you have to put it in warm solution, let the double helix of the DNA unravel and replicate it. The other test is an antigen test. We're just looking for presence of the protein that's on the outside of the virus. And that's usually a more easy test and it's generally rapid. So the government was pretty much holding on to those. Any rapid test, they had them and we didn't. And they've gradually built up their supply and they finally released them just this past week to clinics like ours. So now finally, again, we've got the rapid test. So it's a very dynamic, fluid kind of environment we're working in in terms of the testing.
Good, thanks for talking about the, the testing, because that's a big question I, from people. For instance, just should I get tested? Who, who should get tested? Is it, some people might think, oh, it'll give me a sense of security if I know that I'm not infected. Is that a good reason to get tested? What would you?
If, if you're in a congregant living situation, then yes, everyone should get regularly tested to try to figure out who's got the virus as soon as possible and isolate them. If you're not in a congregant living situation and you're asymptomatic, then no, there's no reason to go in and get a COVID-19 test.
In our area, where, where can one get the, the test? Do you know?
It depends on, you know, I'm a former Kaiser physician. And Kaiser, they, you know, they take care of more than 50% of the patients in Contra Costa County. But they weren't doing much testing. And so it was kind of frustrating, you know, for that reason was Kaiser really wasn't doing much testing. And there was a lot of arm twisting going on at the level of the county, trying to get Kaiser to kind of, shall we say, step up and test more of their members. So initially, the, the rules of the testing were such that only patients with symptoms got tested. And then we gradually migrated to the point where anybody who wants to test should get one. So the county does offer free testing and it's a drive-through. And there's several options you can look at if you go to Contra Costa County Public Health. And you can drive through and get tested no matter who you are, no matter what your symptoms are. And if they, if you have insurance, they'll ask you for your insurance. If you don't have insurance, they won't charge you. And then there's a variety of urgent care clinics like ours that offer it. And other entities like Sutter and Kaiser.
Bob, what's the difference between getting the tested for COVID and getting tested for the antibody? Is that the same thing? Could you clarify?
So the antibody test looks for primarily the long-acting antibody, which is called IgG. And that develops two to three weeks after you, you have the onset of your illness. So there's no point in getting tested for the antibodies until it's been at least that long. When our clinic first came out with the antibody test, particularly in Lafayette, people were rushing in big numbers to get tested because a lot of people had stories like, well, I had this illness back in December and January and I'm hoping it was the COVID and I'm hoping I have antibodies. And you would get these scenes where it kind of sounds crazy where, you know, like a mother and daughter would come in and they'd get tested and they had antibodies and they'd like be whooping it up in the middle of the clinic, making a scene like, you know, it was Christmas. Which I thought was not very appropriate, but that's the kind of thinking that was going on. And really, we don't know what that really means in terms of being protected against COVID in the future and how long the antibodies really last. But a lot of patients were, you know, looking for good news. And there's pretty good reasons to think that if you have the IgG antibody, you're probably somewhat protected or maybe completely protected for a while. In the past month or so, there, the, the demand for that test has kind of fallen off.
Weren't showing that, but it, in the end, it was. And it's lingered on for quite a while.
Well, yeah, I mean, as a clinician, when I see someone who has most typical COVID symptoms, I generally tell them, no matter what your test result is, I'm gonna quarantine you. Because you could come up with a false negative. And with all the symptoms you have, you could still have COVID. On the other hand, if someone has, you know, really mild or just a few or atypical symptoms, then I'm more likely to trust the test and leave it at that.
What's the two-week duration? That's scientific, right?
In terms of when the antibody develops or?
No, the quarantine.
Oh, the quarantine. Well, it is in the sense that it takes, if, for example, if someone in my home has come down with COVID and I'm exposed to them, it takes anywhere from five to 14 days for me to develop symptoms. So that's where the two-week rule comes in. Yeah, and that's been very well taught you.
Thank you. That's really good information and, and good clarification too. Bob Buckley, I, you're on with us and thank you for being here. You know, when you spoke to us last time, Bob, you, you really informed us and also moved us because of the nature of your work. You talked about the difficulty of dealing with, you know, the poor, the poor people who don't have the kind of means that we do. And it was eye-opening for us. So what's been transpiring in your work?
Well, thank you, Father John, thanks for asking me to be here. I wish that I could say that I had good news and that a lot of good things have happened since I've last been talking with you. But, but that wouldn't be true. And, you know, I'm disappointed nationally that we're willing to accept 1,000 to 1,200 deaths a day from this disease. And that we have essentially moved on as a country and not really addressed it as aggressively as I thought we would. From, as you know, I'm an orthopedic surgeon and I really don't take care of sick people. Just mostly injured people or people have a long-term attritional problems. But what I have seen with my patients is really a great deal of depression and anxiety. And to some extent, that anxiety somaticizes into some sort of orthopedic pain, back pain or muscle spasm, shoulder pain. And what I have seen more than I've ever seen before is people requesting opioid medications or Valium-like medications. And that's really to treat the anxiety and depression that they're experiencing from, from the overall pandemic. Because my patients aren't going back to work or if they're going back to work, they're going back on a very limited basis. So they're still suffering significantly from the pandemic, despite perhaps the numbers improving margin. And from a personal standpoint, the disease has struck home a little bit. A member of my immediate family has, has gotten it. And it's hard to see them sick with it. And it's also put me in a position of falling into a whole new, as I've proposed clearly, and whole protocol that I have to follow at work and to return to work. So, yeah, for me, it's as real as ever, if not more real than ever. And I wish I could say, hey, it looks like there's light at the end of the tunnel, but I don't see it. I'm hoping for a vaccine that's effective and one that comes out soon.
Someone has a question for you, Bob. The, the county hospital is a very important component of our healthcare system, serving many poor and disadvantaged members of our community. I understand that it is currently running a substantial deficit and some say its survival is in question. In November, we'll be voting on a proposal, Measure X, to increase funding to the hospital and various county social services. In your work, do you see impacts on the hospital's operations related to the funding problem?
I've only heard of the funding problem through secondhand, thirdhand sources. And I'm, I, I am an employee there and I'm not involved in the finances of the hospital. So I can't really speak to it. I haven't seen in my orthopedic community any impacts from the funding as of yet. But I have heard that it is running a significant deficit, but I really don't know anything more than that.
Thank you. Tim, you're online with us too, aren't you?
Yeah.
Thanks for being here. Why don't you remind folks?
Sure. So somebody who know me, Tim Ganey, I'm a hematologist oncologist by training. The other hat I wear is the chief medical officer for the group I'm in, which is a multi-specialty group, both the Nalomita and Contra Costa County. Don't let the CMO title fool you, it's nothing but a glorified vice principal position. We have pediatricians, internal medicine doctors, family practitioners, surgeons, medical oncologists, radiation oncologists, endocrinologists, ENT doctors. So, and so I would say a couple of things. One is when we talked the last time, it was still relatively new to us how to work in this environment. So I think we have learned different coping mechanisms, how to have patients come in. Like Bob said, we do a lot of telehealth visits, but we still see patients getting radiation treatment, chemotherapy, needing immunizations. The surgeons are getting back to work a little. getting radiation treatment, chemotherapy, needing immunizations. The surgeons are getting back to work a little bit more. So all that has been taking place, I think the supply chain is better. But I would echo what Bob said, that I think we're coping, but I think most people are still somewhat anxious, somewhat depressed about the whole situation. It's still a very active problem in the community. There are still many people getting infected and many people dying. And not to be a real Debbie Downer here, but infectious disease doctors in our group are very much worried now with the flu season coming. And they don't know what that means if somebody has influenza and then they may get a superimposed COVID infection or vice versa. They don't have no idea what that impact is going to have on people's health. They're strongly encouraging everybody to get a flu shot as soon as possible. Usually we would say wait till October, November would be okay, but I think they want people to be getting it now. And, you know, I think as Bob and Bob mentioned, there's just seems to be no coordinated policy or effort. It makes it very frustrating. The the government went ahead and bought up all these test supplies and so other centers couldn't get the testing and now the government releases them, but there's no rhyme or reason who gets the tests. And then we get the CDC recommending one thing one week and then the next week they reverse it. So I think a lot of the medical community is a little frustrated and disheartened by the the lack of a cohesive policy. So like I said, I don't mean to be a Debbie Downer, but I think the next couple of months with the flu season coming is going to really be a challenge for for quite a few people.
So by saying that, are you suggesting there haven't been any combination of flu and COVID yet that you've seen? Or or there might be, but you don't know?
Yeah, so there hasn't been, as of right now, there haven't been any documented co-infections. But it's bound to happen. And then it's unclear as to what that may mean. It may mean people just have both infections, or it may be, it could be a bad thing to have both infections. They just, they have no idea that as it stands right now.
Well, you know, all of us are watching the news. Report, you know, was horrendous. And then we see political rallies with hundreds, if not thousands of people, the majority unmasked. And I mean, for us as laypeople, it's, we can't believe it. I can't imagine what it must be for you when you know differently and know that it should be different. How do you?
Yeah, I think I think, and I'll let Bob and Patty and Bob comment too, but I think in these situations, you've always looked to the CDC and the state health organizations for guidance because they really have the public interests, health interests at heart. And to see it captured and twisted in such a way that somehow the truth is subjugated, it is very disheartening. And then you have this confusion and then you have people taking advantage of the confusion just to do what they want to do and putting other people's health at risk.
You know, for yourselves, all of our doctors here, what would, what do you, like, would you go out to a restaurant? Indoors or outdoors? What are the kind of personal restrictions that you hold to as your bottom line?
Speaking for me, no, I don't go out to eat at all. I'm just cooking at home. I just, I just drew drew a bright red line there and I'm not taking that chance. Yeah, but I mean, there's scientific reasons to think that, well, if I wore a mask and I was eating somewhere outside, you know, it might be okay, but what's the fun in that if I'm wearing a mask and trying to eat my dinner?
Yeah.
Based on my experience and also based on the studies, the key things are really the type of ventilation and masks have already proven that that prevents spread because it's not like really we're protecting ourselves from getting infected. We're preventing other people from getting the infection from us. So it's been proven that when you have an encounter with a person and you're both masked, the incident or the risk of getting infected is very low. And then you add to that if it's not, if it's far, far distance, at least six feet is what they said to on the studies, then that mitigates the risk. Aside from that, the reason why outdoor activities are recommended and especially dining is because in some studies, it's shown that if you're in an enclosed space with like poor ventilation, then that increases the risk too. So so based on that and you know, what I've seen from my encounters with my patients too, actually, we haven't really had eaten out even outdoors because I have young children and just because also I'm exposed in the hospital. And then, you know, I have other people to think about too. So since this started, we actually haven't really had dining experience aside from our home or to go food.
The one thing that I really didn't want to do was fly, get in an airplane. And over the last two weeks, I've been on four different flights. And I think that kind of just speaks that were unavoidable and I couldn't do anything about. But it kind of speaks for me to the whole problem of of the unavoidable ability of transmission of this disease in some regard. I'm all for masks. I'm all for social distancing. But as as was mentioned, this is just buying us time to get a vaccine and and to try to keep the infection rate a little bit lower. But, yeah, I've broken the rule that I wanted to keep and that's not getting in there.
I wanted just to, you know, share with the community, especially in light of what you all have said. Our now that we're in red, and I have a meeting tomorrow with the Presbyterian Council, which is an advisory board of clergy with the bishop, and I'll find out more information. But being in red means I think that churches can open places of worship at 25% capacity of the space or 100 people, whichever is fewer. And we've already measured out our church and given the six feet parameters, we could probably accommodate about 40 people at a service indoors if we were to do that. And I say that because I want the community to recognize that it's not a return to anything like we've known. And it means reservations. It means a whole host of volunteers who have to be number one, willing to volunteer and then put the time in to be there to escort people to their seats to wipe down and sanitize the space after a service. So it's a big challenge. What we've been doing on Sundays, while it's, you know, different than many other or most of the other churches are doing in response to what what you four have said, people are at home. They don't need a mask on. They're with their family and loved ones. They, like this format of Zoom, can see one another. There's no anxiety or fear involved. You can be free to be yourself and yet still be in communion with the other people that are online with you. So I know some people have questioned it and, you know, when are we going to, you know, get back inside it and so on and you know, we can do that, but it's, it's not going to be an easy kind of thing, even a comfortable kind of experience. What we have done in the parish, and I'd like to hear your, our doctors' responses, is that we've had 70 children for first year Christ, 60 teens for confirmation. I've had three funerals and two weddings and they've all been done outdoors. Under our pavilion, we have those round tables and they seat eight people. So a family unit or a family pod could be seated at the table, the next table is six feet apart. Everyone was masked. And in that way, we had to multiply the number of services for sure. Seven or eight first communion masses, six confirmation masses. But it, I, I felt that we were accommodating the need for the sacramental celebrations, but at the same time maintaining safety for everyone involved. To you four, does that sound legitimate, like we've done the right thing?
For me, I'd say so. I think that, you know, everything you described is medically safe. And there's a huge price to pay for your soul if you can't do those sorts of things, you know, and and all the depression and anxiety that goes into missing out on that is terrible for your health. So, yeah, I think you struck a perfect balance, in my opinion.
One of the things that in listening to school parents, especially the parents of the youngest, that TK, K1 and 2, is they, the parents are hurting and the kids are hurting. And if we do reopen school with all of the safety precautions, we would start with the younger grades first because they're the most, a third and fourth grader, you can already have them sitting in front of a laptop on Zoom and listening to a teacher. You can't do that with second grade and under. You have to be there with them. So parents that are trying to work at home cannot work at home, at least not while school is on. They have to be next to their child, assisting them in that learning process because that five, six, seven year old can't can't do it on their own. And a lot of it is the mental strain and emotional strain that both parents and kids are feeling at this time.
If I feel so sorry for parents of kids in that age group. I can't imagine what it would be like having a kindergartner or two to try to keep happy, keep educated, and at the same time do my job from home. That's impossible. I can't imagine how hard that is.
Last week, I think it was last week, we did have Dr. Fred Piazza, who's a psychologist in our area, and he talked about the the mental, keeping sound mental health during a very difficult time. So his words were, you know, well received and he had 10 points about, you know, how people can maintain their, you know, their mental strength during a time which is testing, testing everyone. I want to remind everybody, if you do have a question, you know, please put it on the screen there. Chuck Clements said that Kaiser now has doctor ordered drive through COVID testing in Pleasanton. And Gina put on the chat the link to the county website for for testing. One question, is it possible with everyone wearing masks that there will be fewer sick with the flu this fall?
There's good reasons to hope so and to think that that might be true. I think the flu season in Australia was relatively mild and it might be because they were wearing masks.
Also in the hospital, what we found is, well, when COVID started, we actually didn't have any flu cases when COVID started. And it seemed like the flu season ended early way, right when COVID started. And then as far as other the bacterial, what goes super infection when patients come in with COVID, what the studies have shown is that they only found like 1.2% of bacterial super infection with COVID. So it seems like when you have COVID, it's kind of exclusive COVID.
Bob Buckley, someone asked, my son is getting on a flight from Colorado to California in a few weeks. Aside from the obvious precautions, do you have any other suggestions that she can pass along?
Gosh, I'd really love to be able to say I know what's going on with all of this, but it's well outside of my specialty. Just personally, I sat in my seat. I tried to touch as little as possible. I kept my mask on. And in the airline that I took, the middle seat was open. And they were awfully good. People did follow the rules that were on the flight. Although what I did find is that rules really depend on where you are. In Seattle, everybody wears a mask. And in Salt Lake City and and in the rural areas of Utah, no one wears a mask. And so it does differ. But I just sat quietly and did nothing on the airplane. I'm not sure if that were effective or not.
When we had a friend of mine on who's works for the State Department in immunology and infectious disease, he suggested the window seat because of the circulation of the air that that would be, you know, the, in a way, the safest place. I don't know, you know, how accurate, but that's what he chooses when he has to, you know, take a flight. I personally hate the window seat and I have a hard time fitting in, so I'm just not going to fly. Other questions that anyone might have?
Actually, in relation to flying, one recent study showed that it depends on how long the flight is that and that increases your risk. So the longer your flight is or the farther distance that you have to fly, the the risk increases with that. And that correlates with the longer time for exposure. So I don't know if that's helpful.
Well, that certainly makes sense. It's just like the, if you're with someone longer than 15 minutes, that that's the length of exposure. Under that is less problematic. And certainly, you know, passing by someone doesn't hold that kind of problem for a person.
So I'm curious, for those of you who deal with patients that have issues that are of stress issues that are presenting somatically, even say orthopedic issue. So what are you doing with those folks? How do you, how do you treat them? Because the stress is going to go on. I mean, it's not like it's, we're all done. It seems to get exponentially worse and that has nothing to do with COVID, or at least that's not the only thing out there.
I see lots of patients in telemedicine who have ergonomic injuries, trying to work from home. You know, their workstation at work is usually well built. They're, they're in the proper position for, for, you know, doing their computer work and so forth. And they're not distracted by a bunch of kids running around in their house. So I see lots and lots of patients who have sciatica, cervical radiculopathy. in their house. So I see lots and lots of patients who have sciatica, cervical radiculopathy, muscle spasms, headaches, you know, all kinds of things related to just working from home. Not without having good ergonomics in their workstation. And so I generally tell them is, you know, do everything you can to fix that. And it's probably worth the investment. If you're going to continue to work from home for another six or 12 months, it'll really pay off. But I certainly don't prescribe opiates.
I think it's a really good question and I'm an orthopedic surgeon and not a psychologist and I don't pretend to be a psychologist with my patients. And I usually, if I think that someone's problems are primarily anxiety-related, there really has to be a diagnosis of exclusion for me. Which means I do have to go through an entire workup to make sure that it's not a physical problem. But I'm not capable of dealing with the underlying psychological stressors that may be resulting in their physical pain.
But I think the psychologists and counselors are seeing a lot more patients these days to help them deal, you know, and cope with the stresses and strains of all this.
And I would agree, except that the county, we just don't have those resources.
I wanted to ask about the vaccine and the fight that's going on on the national level. About when it will be out, can we trust that the vaccine that comes out is gonna be, is gonna work? Are there different types? What's?
I'm not going to touch that question.
It's more of a wait and see.
But I mean, is it, you can, it's confusing, right?
Well, I have one, one chance to try to get it right. And what I mean by that polling, and only about 30% of Americans say that they would be willing to get first in line and get the vaccine as soon as it comes out. Epidemiologists say that terms of willing volunteers in America who want to get it right away. And if they have a mishap
do their job and not let it become politicized. And then I think if you let the experts attempt to get it right, then I think we have a good shot. But if you let other people run it that are not experts, then you're going to have a potential disaster.
That 30% sounds like common sense is taking over, at least for, you know, Americans who don't feel we can trust you know, what we're hearing from the government. And, you know, maybe that's a good thing that people are willing to wait until we hear from the experts that this is the thing and we won't be swayed by the political maneuvering of trying to get a vaccine out, you know, before November 3rd.
I'd say that it's quite likely that the population at highest risk, they're most likely more willing to be first in line to to get the vaccine. But I don't know that they've really pulled that population to know.
Because that would be a lot of us online right now.
Honestly, for me, I'll put my hand up and I'll get it real soon. But that's, that's just me calculating my risks.
There's, it just feels assuring, you know, for us to know that our, you know, fellow parishioners are the League of Women Voters. Well, Pat Snyder, are you on?
Some of you, I think, have participated in prior years in what the League of Women Voters calls pros and cons, which are discussions of the ballot propositions that we will be voting on in the coming election. There, we will have representatives from the League coming to help us to understand these and they will be showing some videos on some of the issues, as I say, saying what the pro proponents have to say and what those who are opposed have to say. No judgments are included. It's strictly left to the judgment of the voters to decide based on what they know. And so
Nonpartisan.
It's, it's, it's not, it's, yeah, in no way is it partisan. And of course, these are issues that are there are no candidates involved anyway. They're not going to be talking about candidates at all, but simply the 12 ballot propositions that we will be looking at come November 3rd or when we open our mail-in ballots.
And I think that's a great help because, you know, when the, when that flyer comes in the mail, it's not a flyer, it's a book practically. You know, there's so much material there. And I think it'll be, I know I look forward to being, giving some assistance to see, okay, what, boil it down for me, what are the pros and cons and the critical issues for each of that? So that's next week. Now that is the the vice presidential debates.
Yes.
At the same time. But I think everybody has the capacity to tape the debate. So maybe you can take the debate and, you know, come on this and then watch the debate afterwards. If you dare.
Yeah. And I should say, this program next week is a project of the Social Justice Committee.
Right. And then the following Wednesday, just to look ahead, Father Ron Schmidt, pastor of St. Anthony's Byron will be with us. And Ron is going to talk about the seven core principles of Catholic social teaching and how those gospel principles should influence Catholic Christian as we look both at the issues as well as candidates. So he's done a lot of work for his parish community and I asked him if he would share the fruits of his labor with us in two weeks.
And Father John, there's also a lot of resource in our website that each time the perpetuum comes out, there's a link, direct link to that. So people can go and read up on a lot of these resources that we don't have place in the perpetuum.
Being with us and continuing to enlighten us. May God bless your work and give you the strength, the insight and the courage that you need to keep hope alive for your parents and patients. And thank you for doing that for us as well. So have a peaceful evening, everyone.